Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Linehan.
Here.
Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Murphy. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu. Counselor Yancey. And Counselor Zachem. We have a majority.
Madam Clerk, Counselor Baker just poked his head in and asked if he could be recorded as president. Thank you. I would ask at this -- though the clerk has informed me that the quorum is present. I would ask at this time for all councilors and guests to please rise. I invite the clerk to the podium to deliver today's invocation. After the invocation is delivered, I would ask that all members and guests remain standing as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. As the Boston City Council assembles here today, may we pause to honor the memories, life, and service of Lieutenant Edward Walsh and firefighter Michael Kennedy, who made the ultimate sacrifice as a Boston firefighter. We come together to seek meaning beyond our limited selves. We come together to seek a spirit that binds the scattered threads of our humanity, a thread that binds us together in sympathy, in understanding, in love, a thread that weaves the past, present, and future together and unites the fragments of our existence into a meaningful whole. Since we have felt the sense of death, since we have borne its thread, life has grown more dear. Since we have felt the sense of death, the gift of life is more adjuled, and the thread that binds us together is much more precious. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for that inspiring and very pertinent message. At this time, I will lead the body in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. Madam Clerk, I'd like to note that Counselor Lamatina has arrived. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of last week's meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing, no objections to the minutes are so approved. Madam Clerk, communications from his honor, the mayor.
Docket number 0585, message and order authorizing the Environment Department to accept and expend a grant of $40,000 from the U.S. Department of Energy for the purpose of installation of rooftop solar in Boston by reducing barriers and lowering costs.
A docket 0585 will be assigned to the Committee on the Environment and Parks.
Docket number 0586, message and order authorizing the Boston Center for Youth and Families to accept and expend a grant of $31,000 for the Boston Public Health Commission for the purpose of continued support for the safe and successful youth initiative.
A docket 0586 will be assigned to the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities.
Docket number 0587, message and order approving a petition for a special law regarding an act establishing a special events fund in the city of Boston.
A docket 0587 is assigned to the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 0588, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest dated April 11, 2014, for the Urban Science Academy, including West Roxbury Academy, at the West Roxbury Education Complex, 1205 VFW Parkway, West Roxbury, Mass., 02132.
Madam Clerk, could you please read through 0593?
Thank you. Docket number 0589, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest dated April 11, 2014, for the Excel High School at 95 G Street in South Boston, Mass., 02127. Docket number 0590, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest dated April 11, 2014, for the Curly K-8 School, 40 Persian Road, Jamaica Plain, Mass., 02130. Docket number 0591, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest dated April 11, 2014, for the Mario Yumana Academy, 312 Board Street, East Boston, Mass., 02128. Docket number 0592, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to submit for the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest dated April 11, 2014, for the William B. Rogers Middle School, 15 Everett Street, High Park, Mass., 02236. And docket number 0593, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest dated April 11, 2014, for the Blackstone Elementary School, 380 Shawmut Avenue, Boston, Mass., 02118.
Dockets 0588 through 0593 are assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means and the Committee on Education. Clerk, please read docket 0594 and 0595.
Docket number 0594.
Excuse me, Madam Clerk.
Through 97.
Through 97, yes, thank you.
Docket number 0594, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of -- I'm sorry, Helen Pillsbury as a member of the Aberdeen Architectural Conservation District Commission for term expiring May 31, 2016. Docket number 0595, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Lisa Passell as a member of the Aberdeen Architectural Conservation District Commission for a term expiring May 31, 2016. Docket number 0596, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Sharon Kaylee as an alternate member of the Aberdeen Architectural Conservation District Commission for a term expiring May 31, 2015. And docket number 0597, message and order of the confirmation of the reappointment of Michelle Yee Lee as a member of the Fort Point Channel Landmark District Commission for term expiring May 1, 2015.
Madam Clerk, docket 0594 through 0597 are referred to the Committee on Economic Development and Planning.
Docket number 0598, communication was received from Michael D. Dennehy, interim commissioner of Public Works Department, transmitting the 2014 annual report regarding access to city recycling programs for large residential buildings. Docket -- do you want me to read?
Yes, please. Through 0601.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket 0599, communication was received from Barbara Ferrer, executive director of the Boston Public Health Commission, transmitting the Funding Stream Index, actual 2013. Docket number 0600, communication was received from President Linehan regarding the Boston City Council meeting scheduled for Wednesday, April 2, 2014, which has been canceled due to the attendance of funeral and wake services for the Boston firefighters who lost their lives in the line of duty. And docket number 0601, communication was received from President Linehan regarding the Boston City Council meeting scheduled for Wednesday, April 2, 2014, will be rescheduled to Friday, April 4, 2014, at 10:00 a.m.
Docket 0598 through 0601 will be placed on file. Matters recently heard for possible action.
Should I read the first two together?
Yeah, please.
Docket number 0362, order for hearing to review the fiscal year 2013 audited financial statements. And docket number 0363, order for hearing to review the fiscal 2014 budget.
The chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Post Audit and Oversight, Counselor Yancey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We have been doing our due diligence with regards to many city departments as we review fiscal year 2013, which ended in a surplus of more than $8 million, and yet to date fiscal year 2014. Mr. President, so far, we have reviewed more than $1.1 billion in appropriations made by this body out of the $2.6 billion. I want to thank particularly Counselor Presley, Counselor Wu, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Jackson, Counselor Zachem, and I'm sure I'm missing -- oh, and Counselor Murphy for participating in these hearings. Obviously, Mr. President, these hearings are very demanding of the time of the councilors and of the administration. And I'm cognizant of that, and I appreciate it. But I also know that a fundamental role of the Boston City Council is to review all of the appropriations that we have approved to ensure that the administration is giving good faith effort and indeed living up to the commitments made to this body during the appropriating process. What I've discovered so far, Mr. President, is that it's very rare to find any of the budgeted items to be expended exactly as requested. There have been some unusual instances where the line item has lined up. But I'm also convinced that there's been a good faith effort on the part of the prior administration and the current administration to do that. I'm concerned, as I've always expressed in the past, that we don't really have our overtime expenditures under control in many of our departments. I'm concerned that, with very rare exception, no department or city government today reflects the demographic makeup of the city of Boston, which is a very well-articulated policy position by this body, as well as by the prior and current administration. So in other words, we have a long way to go. And we still have a number of departments to review. And I want to work with the administration to make sure that we get the work done in a way that accommodates everyone's schedule. It's very difficult to do. We do have some hearings scheduled for next week, I believe, Human Resources. I'm not sure if the administration has confirmed their participation in that one. But it is important because, as all of you know, for the past 30 years, I've taken a keen interest in the operation of city government from day one. My question is, how do Boston residents really benefit from the operation of city government with regards to services rendered in every neighborhood of the city of Boston? But also, I'm concerned that, to the extent we have the opportunity to stimulate economic development in the neighborhoods or to help stabilize the situation in various neighborhoods by the actual operation of city government with regards to our hiring decisions and with regards to our decisions regarding contracts. And just for your information, Mr. President, I've discerned that, based on statistics I received as of December 31, 2013, roughly a third of the actual personnel dollars that this body approved goes to non-residents. There's nothing illegal about it. Most people are in compliance with the residency law. But the facts remain. We're talking more than $300 million go directly out of the city every year for personnel. And that -- there may be some very good reasons for that, Mr. President. But I will be proposing that we take a look at our policies with regards to residency. But worse than that, I find it very difficult to find Boston-based businesses receiving the bulk of the contracts that this city awards, which is yet another opportunity to give people in Boston to give back to the city in terms of providing services. But also, the revenue streams to families and businesses in the city of Boston, I believe, deserve our attention. And finally, Mr. President, I would like to say that I'm convinced that 99.9% of all city employees are really committed to providing high-quality services to the residents of Boston, whether those employees are residents or non-residents or whatever their gender or race happens to be. But we still have a major problem in terms of having a city government that truly reflects the city population as a whole. And I will continue to work on that. I'm not quite finished with the process. And thank you for your cooperation, the cooperation of all of our colleagues. Thank you very much. And I want to remand this back to committee.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Thank you for the due diligence. Thank you for the report. Obvious by your report today, it's essential matters that need to be addressed. And we appreciate your effort. Docket 0362 and 0363 will remain in the Committee on Post Audit and Oversight. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0346 and 0511.
Docket number 0346, ordinance amending CBC Chapter 9-1.3, Inspection and Reinspection of the Rental Units. And docket number 0511, message and ordinance amending CBC 9-1.3, Inspection and Reinspection of Rental Units.
The chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Flaherty.
A long hearing, but very informative, fair and balanced, with most, if not all, of our colleagues attending. So continue to get feedback from both sides of the issue. There were several flaws that were pointed out. It was that the implementation, the registration portion, the fact that landlords didn't actually have a criteria or a checklist as to the items that inspectors would be looking for. There were glitches with respect to some of the online registration process. So just to name a few. And there was also, I heard loud and clear that folks from all sides wanted good, clean, safe, inhabitable living conditions for all of our residents. I also heard that a registry is important for the simple reasons of being able to, particularly in our line of work, getting calls from constituents regarding a particular situation or a problem property, that we have the name and identity and a phone number for those responsible in an effort to at least try to solve the problem. Heard loud and clear that we weren't doing a good enough job tracking down the bad landlords and seemed to be painting everyone with a broad brush. So it was sort of a smorgasbord of pro and con. And so from that, it's obviously going to remain in committee for the time being. And we need to make a decision as to whether or not a working session is appropriate or put both matters out, given that we've debated the discussion ad nauseam, to vote your conscience. So in the process of sort of streamlining what's the appropriate next step. But I can assure folks it'll be soon. This isn't something that we're going to drag out. I think it's important. We heard concerns across the city from small property owners, as a result of which our mayor responded, this body responded. So now there's two matters before us that will require the council to vote. And that will happen in the very near future. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. That was an informative hearing and one that lasted over four hours. So I appreciate your effort in that regard. Docket 0346 and 0511 will remain in the Committee on Government Operations. motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 0602, Counselor Zachem offered the following order for hearing regarding Cummings Trust.
Chair recognizes Counselor Zachem.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. The Cummings Trust right now consists of quite a bit of property located in the towns of Burlington and Wilbur, Massachusetts that was bequeathed by Mrs. Mary Cummings for the benefit of the residents of the city of Boston in 1930. The property has fallen into disuse, at least by residents of the city of Boston. There's also -- the property itself was appraised about 15 years ago for $22 million. So I think it's safe to say the value has since gone up significantly. There's also close to half a million dollars in liquid financial assets associated with the property. And I just believe that, in a time of sort of, we're cutting back, what we're talking about, as this council discussed just last week, sending children on the T instead of on school buses because of financial constraints, I think it's incumbent upon us as members of the city council to examine the best ways we can make use of assets of the city of Boston. This is one of the largest trusts that's been left for the benefit of the city. And I certainly look forward to a hearing in the appropriate committee to talk to the Law Department, the trustee, who is the city treasurer, and others to see what is the best way and what is legally possible for the city to make more use of what is a great asset. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Zachem. Counselor Yancey.
But that's fine. We can discuss that when we go into hearing. I am interested in this issue as well. I want to -- I rise to commend Counselor Zachem for bringing this before us. It's a critical issue. I've had the opportunity over the years of trying to obtain some cooperation from the administration in terms of the disposition of this issue. And I think that it's something that requires our attention. Yes, the property is located out in Burlington. But it could, if used properly, it could be a great asset for our parks department, recreation, for example, and other uses. But I agree with the good counselor that the value of the property should also be looked at. I do know that certain arrangements have been made with the town of Burlington to utilize some of that property. I'm not convinced that the process that the city went through, bypassing the city council, is one that was strictly legitimate, just between you and I. But I also believe that we have an obligation to take a look at all of the assets in city government. Most people in these chambers probably don't realize that we do not -- the city of Boston doesn't really control City Hall Plaza. It's controlled by the Boston Redevelopment Authority, not the city of Boston. There is a legal distinction. So there are other instances like this that I think merits our close examination. I commend a good colleague, my good colleague, for offering this. And I ask that my name be added.
Please add Counselor Yancey's name, add the chair's name, Counselor O'Malley's name, Counselor Flaherty's name, Counselor Baker's name, and Counselor Presley's name. Thank you. Docket 06 and Counselor Jackson's name and Counselor Seoma's name. Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Jackson.
Mr. President, I just wanted to commend the maker at a time when we are in really difficult financial times. I think it's absolutely imperative that we actually look at where our dollars and cents are. If our dollars and cents are up in the North Shore, we need to look at that and look at the best way at a time when we're looking at a school budget that's going to be very tight, and also a city budget that's going to be very tight, to really reevaluate those assets. So I commend Counselor Zachem on his work here. Thank you very much. And please add my name.
And add Counselor Jackson's name. Docket 0602 is assigned to the Committee on the Environment and Parks.
Docket number 0603, Counselors Presley and Jackson offer the following resolution, calling for Boston colleges and universities to support good jobs for adjunct professors.
Chair recognizes Counselor Presley.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to thank my good friend and colleague, District 7 City Councilor Tito Jackson, for cosponsoring this with me. This reinforces our body's longstanding commitment to the right for workers to decide for themselves whether or not to form a union. In 2011, we found out that 67% or more, approximately 15,000 members of our faculty at nonprofit colleges and universities in Boston were not on the tenure track. All 100% of the 600 members of faculty at for-profit colleges do not have an opportunity to gain tenure. The average full-time tenured professor makes on average $113,000 to $154,000 annually. Juxtaposed, the average adjunct professor, based upon their pay scale currently, if they taught six classes a semester, they would average $22,000 to $31,000 annually for a 12 course and an average annual income of $45,000 to $62,000. So I know you could say sort of "crime in your river" here, but let me just sort of walk through this because this was an issue that I was not aware of. But I think it's a big one. And I'll tell you why, just in plain terms. Given parental debt, the high cost of higher education, student loan debt, we are constantly asking, you know, what are we getting for our money to prepare our students for life and for the workforce? And I would argue that when you have a compromised or undermined teaching force, then that is impacting the quality of their teaching in the classroom. They're basically cheap labor. So our adjunct professors, this is just a matter of fairness. They've made the timely scholastic, expensive financial and personal investment in teaching our college students. They often don't have offices where they can have office hours. 90% of their time is dedicated to teaching, and they have no time to devote to administrative needs or research. So I think in the end, we all pay for this. So I look forward to working with the chair to expedite a hearing and to hear organizers and current adjunct professors to testify to the conditions they currently work under. Again, this is really just a matter of fairness. And again, in the long run, supporting our teaching force does mean supporting our young people who are receiving that education and ultimately, you know, benefits our workforce and our economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Counselor Jackson.
I want to thank my good friend and fellow Dorchester resident, Counselor Presley, for taking a leadership role on this matter. This is a fight for the little people, the folks who are working the hardest, the folks that are doing most of the work. It is absolutely critical that this body, as we've done in the past, as we've stood for so many folks who may have been voiceless, may have not been seen, that we actually step forward and have their back. This is a town where people speak about eds and meds. Education is a huge aspect in the city of Boston. And Counselor Murphy reminds us regularly that over 51% of the landmass in the city of Boston is under nonprofits. And we want our institutions to pay what they owe, to look out for the people who are working hard on a daily basis and who are investing and rearing up our research and development pipeline, which is our young people in the city of Boston. We -- people don't move here for the weather, ladies and gentlemen. People move here for -- okay, I got one that was funny, okay. People move here for, okay, I got one that was funny, okay. They move here for smart people. Michael Porter's theory, or his cluster theory around institutions, in particular, businesses forming and starting and prospering based on smart people, is definitely employed here. We want to make sure that those smart people are the ones who are rearing up and teaching that smart, those smart people, that they stay here, but they are able to work with dignity, they are able to work with respect, and they are able to take care of their families and to build a life here in the city of Boston. Moreover, as a city, we're planning on building about 25, well, 30,000 units of housing. Only 5,000 units of, of that is actually in affordable housing. We got to figure out a way to deal with what affordable means. One of the ways that we deal with affordable housing is build more of it, but one of the other ways that we deal with affordable housing is we help people to make more money and to make their housing and their lifestyle more affordable. I'm so happy to be able to join with my good friend, who, year over year, order over order, fights for, for people who we oftentimes don't see and we oftentimes don't hear from. I want to thank Counselor Presley for partnering and her leadership on this, and I look forward to an expedited hearing. This is a huge part of the fabric of the city of Boston, and if we don't do right by these folks, then we're not doing right by the city of Boston. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Counselor Yancey. Thank you very much. In the interest of full disclosure, I actually did serve as an adjunct professor for a couple of years at Ponca Hill Community College. I thought I was volunteering, given the, you know, the small checks that we received every once in a while, but it was a very enjoyable experience, and I'd probably do it again. I rise to, to thank Counselor Presley and Jackson for offering this. It's not an issue that is on the forefront of any controversy and any headlines in local newspapers, but I think it does raise some very important issues that this body should be in position to address and certainly to support the working people and the students of the city of Boston. So I rise to ask that my name be added, and Counselor, I wish you were around in 1994 when I was actually doing that work. Thank you very much. Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Please add Counselor Yancey's name, add Counselor, please record Counselor Murphy as president and add Counselor Murphy's name. Counselor Zakeham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise, I will be brief, commend Counselors Presley and Jackson on making this resolution. I think it's incredibly important, as Counselor Jackson mentioned, that so much of the economy in the city of Boston is based on our institutions of higher education, and if we continue to see the stratification of incomes by folks who are supposedly, you know, towards the top of, top of the income line or top of the education system over there, I think it's just going to be such a bad, such a bad precedent for the city of Boston. It's going to lead more and more of the inequality that we see and we talk about in this chamber and hear about from our constituents almost every day. So I'd just like to commend them for making this resolution. I'd like to ask that my name be added.
Counselor, please add Counselor Zakeham's name. Counselor Presley, are you moving suspension of the rules? You want to report it to committee? All right, just a brief recess, one sec. Thank you, Counselor Presley. At this time, Counselor Presley moves suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0603. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0603 is adopted. Late files?
Late file from Counselor Michelle Wu in Boston City Council. Dear Madam Clerk, due to a previously scheduled commitment, I will not be able to attend the Boston City Council meeting scheduled for Friday, April 4, 2014. With warm regards and best wishes, sincerely, Michelle Wu, Boston City Councilor at large.
That matter will be placed on file. Madam Clerk, there are no other late file matters at this time. Anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. Hearing and seeing no takers on that, we'll move forward. There are no late file matters for the consent agenda at this time. Do you have some? The Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted. I, I just wanted to take a moment at this time before memorials, just to acknowledge the, the presence of the Boston City Council at the services throughout the fire, the stricken firefighters, both Kennedy and Walsh, earlier this week. And I want to thank Local 718 and the Boston Fire Department for the opportunity that they presented the Boston City Council during those memorial services, so that we could honor those fallen heroes appropriately. I'd ask it as all guests and all members to please rise as the council prepares, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Yancey. Please take your, please take your seats. He's quick on the draw, does Counselor Yancey. Consent to make a brief statement? All right, Counselor Yancey. Thank you very much. Mr. President, it's been a series of strange coincidences this year, that we had a meeting on January 15, which is Dr. King's birthday. We also had a meeting on March 5, which was the anniversary of the Boston massacre where Christmas addicts gave his life. And today, in a move that no one would have ever predicted, we're meeting on the anniversary of Dr. King's assassination. I was, I remember, and I'm sure you do, Mr. President, April 4, 1998, I was a student at Tufts University when Dr. King was assassinated and put this country in a real tailspin in terms of violence and incrimination. As a young teenager in the city of Boston, I was outraged as well. How could someone who fought so hard against violence be so violently taken away from us? And later on this month, Mr. President, one of our colleagues is going to turn 39. Dr. King was just 39 years old. A young man who had a great impact on the entire world, and I take particular note of his age, Mr. President. I remember when I turned 39, and I asked the question, what have I contributed in my brief years on this earth at the age of 39? I recently celebrated my 65th birthday, and I'm asking myself the same question. So I just wanted us to remember Dr. King today, and in remembering Dr. King, let's also remember the enormous contributions that very young people make in this world. And I believe we have to recognize that, and again, as we mourn the loss of two very young men, both of the firefighters who gave their lives for this city, were younger than my oldest son. So we must value every moment we have on this earth and remember the contributions that everyone makes, especially on the 46th anniversary of his assassination. I think we should remember Dr. King. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Yancey, for that. I'd ask all guests and all members to please rise as the council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in the memory of the following. For Counselor Flaherty and the Chair, Carol Ann Sapienza. For Counselor Murphy, Charles Charlie Buchanan Senior. For Counselor Yancey, Carlton B. Moore, our former Fort Lauderdale City Commissioner and longtime political activist. Hannah Essie Bentham Simpson, AKA Kes. And for the council as a whole, for Francis J. Pop Lynch, Congressman Stephen Lynch's father, and of course, for Lieutenant Edward Walsh and firefighter Michael Kennedy. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, April 9, 2014, at 12 o'clock noon. All those in favor, aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the council is adjourned. Thank you all.